Are we on now?
Yes, we're ready to begin.
Very good. I called the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission Meeting of October 14, 2020 to order. Please do the roll call.
Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Vice Chair Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Jerry Greenfield.
Here.
Brienne Tocinski.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Erin Woods.
Erin, you're on mute.
Here.
Phyllis Millen. You're also on mute.
Phyllis, you're on mute.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, now we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and we have one public hearing tonight on the TSP update for Town Center. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session, item, or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
Chair Mesba, we do not have any citizens here in person or on Zoom to participate and testify before you this evening.
Thank you very much. Consideration of September 16, 2020, minutes of the Planning Commission, are there any corrections or revisions? I'm not seeing any hands raised. That means it's approved as submitted. We can move to the legislative hearing if staff is ready for that.
Thank you, Chair Mesba. If I may, I would actually like to add a brief agenda item prior to the hearing this evening, not necessarily a formal agenda item, but just briefly wanted to introduce a new staff person who is sitting to my right, Ms. Amanda Guile-Hinman used to sit. We have a new Assistant City Attorney named Ryan Adams, and he's joining us here tonight and will be joining us on the Planning Commission moving forward. He has a lot of experience, a lot of legal background, thankfully, and can help us particularly around land use issues, which I'll let him tell you a little bit about. Most recently, he was serving as a lawyer for the U.S. Army, correct? Okay. Wanted to make sure I got the right branch. And he does have experience actually working for the Planning Commission for the city of Canby, our neighbor to the south. So we are excited to have Ryan join us. He most recently came from Kosovo, where he was just a few weeks ago. So we're excited. He's here in Wilsonville, and I'll let him introduce himself a little bit. And then, as we've done in the past, I would appreciate it if each of the Planning Commissioners could also introduce themselves to Ryan with just a couple of brief statements about your experience here in the community and how long you've lived here. So with that, thank you.
Hi, folks. My name's Ryan Adams. It's a pleasure to meet you virtually and to be here with you. I have been practicing privately in Canby for about the last six years, and had a practice over there. I did a lot of land use and litigation. I was also on the Canby Planning Commission. I was a member over there. So I have a little bit of experience dealing with this, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. As was said, I'm in the Oregon Army National Guard. Recently, we were deployed over in Kosovo. I'm one of the judge advocates for the 41st Infantry Brigade Combat Team, so we were on the ground doing peacekeeping missions and things of that nature over there. So I interviewed for this job virtually from my barracks room, which was a blast. So that was a good time. So I ended up coming back here a little bit early to accept the position. So I think I'm very excited to work with all of you, and if I can ever do anything for you personally or professionally, let me know.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Why don't we start with Commissioner Woods?
Yes, good evening. My name is Erin Woods. I am a 24-year resident here in Wilsonville. I previously served on the Development Review Board B for two terms. I did go to the Citizens Academy as well. I am a member of a number of other, I'll say, community programs and groups, and I just want to say welcome. I always like to see veterans, since I'm a veteran myself, and I welcome you with open arms.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tocinski.
Hi, I'm Brienne. I'm actually new to this. This is only my second meeting. I was appointed as a temporary appointee by the mayor just last month. So I've lived in Wilsonville for two and a half years, but I grew up just north of here in Berry South, nonincorporated Toowallington, my whole life. So I also went to the Citizens Academy, and I'm a real estate appraiser by trade. So it's nice to meet you, and I look forward to working with you.
You too.
Commissioner Millen.
Hi. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Wilsonville and served on the Development Review Board, as most people have, who then graduate to the Planning Commission. I've been on the Planning Commission now for, I think, five years, trying to remember. And I also served on one of the Parks and Recreation initial planning documents. So, hi, welcome.
Thanks.
Commissioner Willard.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Willard, and I have been in Wilsonville over six years now. Time is flying by. I work in the construction industry. I actually work for Intel, but I've been on the construction side the whole time. So that's my passion that I have brought to the Planning Commission, is that side of it. And I am kind of glad to be working from home because I don't have that commute anymore. Welcome.
Thanks.
Commissioner Greenfield.
Yeah, Jerry Greenfield here. I'm a 12-year resident of Wilsonville, having lived in a variety of municipalities over my career: Philadelphia, Boston, New Hampshire, most recently 14 years in a small city in Japan before moving to Wilsonville in 2009. I'm, like others, on the commission, a graduate of the DRB, a couple of terms, and I'm in my second term on commission here.
Commissioner Heberlein.
Yes, great. Good evening and welcome, Ron Heberlein. I am an eight-year resident of the city of Wilsonville, and I'm also a nine-year employee working within the city limits. I worked for Collins Aerospace as a program manager and as an engineer previous to that. So a data-driven mindset is definitely for me, as almost everybody else. I came for Planning Commission as part of DRB. I think I was on DRB for four years, and then I've been on Planning Commission for a little bit over two.
And I am Comrade Mesba, and I have lived here since 2016. Moved here from the Madison, Wisconsin metropolitan area, and I worked for almost 30 years there with the Regional Planning Commission. And so my background and experience is in planning and urban and environmental engineering. And I'm retired now. So that's my story. Very happy to have you on board.
Thank you. It's great to meet each of you.
Thank you, Chair Mesba.
Are we ready to read the... Should I read the hearing procedure?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Matters before the Planning Commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi-judicial hearings conducted by the City Development Review Board. The Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the Planning Commission. If you wish to testify tonight, you need to complete a testimony card. For those who are here in person, please complete a testimony card located at the side of the room and hand it to the recorder. The here is the City Hall. For members of the public participating remotely with a Zoom meeting platform, digital comment cards are already filed with recorder, but we ask that you please indicate now or after the presentation a desire to testify by sending a message to the recorder at City Hall using the Zoom chat function. For those people joining the meeting by phone only, you will be unmuted after the staff presentation and asked one at a time if you wish to testify. Please note that testimony may also be submitted by email during the hearing by emailing the following email address: planning@ci.wilsonville.or.us. Now please confirm with the recorder through the Zoom chat option that you emailed your comments. Your email will then be read into the record. Remain in the meeting until the comments are received and read aloud. A written comment or testimony received after the public hearing has closed cannot be considered. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you're testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address at the beginning of your comments, or if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted and make your statement. When your name is called to testify, if you're present in council chambers, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone for the record. If you're participating in the meeting remotely using the Zoom phone or web platform, please wait to be unmuted by the recorder before stating your name and comments for the record. When you testify, please address your comments to the criteria that will be reviewed by the city staff at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the Planning Commission are fairly complicated. For that reason, we especially appreciate any specific recommendations or suggestions that you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If we have a large number of people interested in testifying, we limit the time allotted to each member of the public to three minutes. At the end of your testimony, members of the commission may have questions for you. Thank you for taking the time to participate in the hearing tonight and help us deal with these issues. I would now like to pass on the mic, so to speak, to staff to start the process of presentation. Ms. Bates Scheller, you starting?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mesba and commissioners. It is a distinct pleasure for me to introduce this project this evening. As you know, this is our first implementation action from the Town Center Plan that was adopted last year. You know that the Town Center Plan was a council goal in the 2015-2017 Council Goal Setting Session. Staff was able to get grant money to help us to conduct that planning effort, which we launched with the public in 2017 and adopted in May of 2019. Along with that, with the extensive public engagement that we went through, a number of projects were identified that really... the infrastructure projects particularly related to a multimodal transportation system would really transform the Town Center and help to achieve the vision that was set forth by the community in that plan. The projects that were identified in that plan are now being forwarded for inclusion into the TSP, the Transportation System Plan. So that is the action, the hearing that's before you this evening. While it seems a simple one, integrating it into a capital plan, it is a very exciting step in the long-term process of this plan and this vision. This will enable us to allow the area to be ready for development, and we'll be able to provide distinct direction to developers who are developing and taking redevelopment projects in the Town Center. And it will also help us to look into and set forth a finance plan for how to finance the infrastructure projects in the Town Center. So this is a critical project, and without further ado, I will introduce Koi Le, our Development Engineering Manager for the city, who will introduce this project and the rest of the project team.
Thank you, Miranda. Good evening, Jan Mashford, and the members of the Planning Commission. I am Koi Le, the Development Engineering Managers for the city of Wilsonville. I am co-managing Town Center TSP update project with Kim Rival from Planning Division. As Miranda mentioned, we brought in front of you the proposed amendments to the TSP for your discussion in the work session in July. The amendments were to incorporate the transportation improvements from the Town Center Plan into the TSP so that we officially allow the city to pursue financial strategy to construct these improvements. At the end of the work session in July, we indicated that one of the milestones was to coordinate with ODOT to gain their support on the amendments because the proposed improvements along Wilsonville corridor are adjacent to ODOT interchange terminals. We have seen receive the official support from ODOT, and the letters was included in your package provided to you tonight. This evening, we are bringing the proposed amendments back in front of you in the hearing set in seeking for your recommendation of approval so we can move forward to seek for the city council final approval and adoption in November. With that, I would like to introduce our traffic consultant from DKS, who will present you in detail what the amendments are once more time, and we are happy to answer any question that you may have at the end of the presentation.
Scott, you can start.
Okay. Can everybody see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Can you hear me okay? Good.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mesba, on Planning Commission. Excited to share the planned amendments to the city of Wilsonville Town Center Plan. There we go. Sorry, there's a little delay on my slide of answers. So what is the TSP and why does the city need an amendment? Koi hit on this a little bit, as well as Miranda, but the city's Transportation System Plan is your long-term policy and planning document. It tracks the UGB and the future land use within the city, and it identifies the 20-year transportation projects that the city needs to identify to help start collecting funding as development occurs to build those transportation improvements. Having a TSP in place and adopted is essential for the city to be able to compete for federal, state, and regional funding for transportation projects. On those grant applications for transportation projects, one of the first things they ask is, is this project part of your adopted Transportation System Plan? So it's critical to have the city TSPs updated and up to date based on changing land use. It also needs to be current with changes in state and regional transportation policy, as well as to address rapidly changing local conditions. And many of the local conditions that have required TSP amendments over the years include the Bill of Wad development, Frog Pond, and now the current Town Center Plan. Again, the TSP amendment was a requirement of the original Town Center Plan. And this is just a repeat of what Koi said, but we came before you back in July with a full presentation. I believe everybody other than Commissioner Tocinski was a part of that. So we've got the majority of the presentation to share with you. The big things that have changed since that last work session and our last presentation. Koi and Miranda worked very hard. If I was in person, I would love to pat them on the back for what they did with ODOT. And we have finally gained approval from ODOT. We have a letter that they support our project list with some minor changes, and I'll share those changes. The minor text changes that they recommended were related to SI projects SI-09 and SI-10. And the SI stands for spot improvement, and I'll share a little bit more about the projects down the road. So here's a summary of the projects that came out, the new projects that came out of the Town Center Plan. The first two are roadway extension. RE stands for roadway extension projects. And if you can see my pointer, roadway extension RE15 is the Park Place Extension. This is Wilsonville Road, and this is the extension of Park Place. And RE16 is the extension of Court Side Drive. So you can see those two projects right there. So here's RE15 and RE16. And then we have three urban upgrades: UU Project 11, so you can see it right here, which urban upgrades typically means that we're rebuilding the roadway to meet current urban needs for bike facilities, pedestrian facilities, motor vehicles. And a lot of times, those have to do with making them multimodal for all modes of travel. So we have some recommended improvements to Park Place, UU 11, and UU 12. Park Place at Town Center Park, as well as UU 13, which is some Court Side Drive upgrades, which is mainly adding some additional bicycle improvements along that segment. And then these are our Bike Walk projects. Sorry, I wasn't sure if you guys were being blocked by the photos there, so I've moved that to the side. So some other Bike Walk projects that were added through the Town Center Plan. Bike Walk 09 used to be the I-5 Ped Bridge, which the city is working on right now. You've probably been involved in some of those meetings. But Bike Walk, that project was renumbered to Bike Walk 09A. And then Bike Walk 09B was added, and that is to add some additional bicycle and pedestrian gateway treatments within the Town Center. So that's the Bike Walk 09A and 09B. We also have Bike Walk 18, which is adding bicycle lanes along Town Center Loop West to connect up to Wilsonville Road. And then there's Bike Walk Project 18, which is the promenade, I believe it's right here, the promenade bike lane improvements, as well as Bike Walk 19A and Bike Walk 19B. 19A is the cycle track that will connect up to the bicycle and pedestrian bridge and to the center of Town Center. And then 19B is the cycle track that will connect to Town Center East. So this is that east-west connection to Town Center Loop East. And then Bike Walk 20 is also the west promenade. So I'll just take a minute. Is there any questions so far on the summary of projects? All right, I'll continue. At our last meeting, one of the things that's clear to me, that the Planning Commission was having a hard time understanding some of the improvements to Wilsonville Road. So I went back to the old Town Center Plan and pulled out some of the figures. So you actually had some graphics that go along with the changes to the intersections. And I wanted to walk these through you just to make sure the Planning Commission is clear on what recommendations we're making. And so these are the SI projects, and again, that SI stands for spot improvements. So this is Wilsonville Road in the figure, and these are some of the approaches. This is Town Center Loop West. And so that's the first one we're going to start with, is looking at the spot improvements at Town Center Loop West. So the plan's there to modify the existing traffic signal to eliminate the eastbound and westbound left turns. And so those of you that drive this corridor regularly, eastbound on Wilsonville Road, there's dual left turn lanes that connect to Town Center Loop West. And so those left turns would be modified and removed, so we would no longer have east-west left turns. And the purpose of this is to focus and make this more of a multimodal intersection and move some of that traffic to the new Park Place Extension, which I'll talk about in the next project. So we've eliminated those left turns. We've improved the bicycle pedestrian safety. You can see that having crossings on all approaches today, there's no crossing on the west leg, and a lot of that was safety-related because of the heavy right turns and the heavy left turns and just the pedestrian safety. So with these changes, we'll be able to make this more of a multimodal intersection and improve the safety, as well as adding landscaping on both approaches. On the east approach, we'll maintain the existing. It'll just shift over a lane. And then on the west leg, eastbound approach, we'll be able to add a median, a landscape median at the intersection. And this is one of the intersections that ODOT requested, some text changes. They asked for this additional language to be added that reads, "This project should include a trap lane to mitigate queuing into the ramp terminal intersection unless at the time of construction, a 20-year analysis demonstrates that is not needed, or if an alternative mitigation is identified that has similar or better results." And that may be a little confusing, so I have another figure to help you understand what ODOT is asking for. So this is a figure. This, again, is the Town Center Loop West intersection with Wilsonville Road. And what ODOT's concerned about with I-5 being a key facility in their system, they're concerned that with the removal of left turns, the through lanes will back up and impact the interchange. And we've done a lot of simulation and evaluation, and we agree that... So what they're asking for is to... Today, there's dual left turn lanes, so we'd be able to still create a median where the existing left turn lane is and build a median on this side where the existing left turn lane is, but turn one of the left turn lanes into a trap lane. So if you get into that lane, you'll end up being in the left turn lane that will be at the new signal at Park Place. And I'll talk a little bit about the Park Place intersection in my next slide. So ODOT just wanted some additional queuing space. Our analysis determined it wasn't necessary, it wasn't critical, but ODOT still wanted that language. They've left it open, and that we can continue to monitor as development occurs in the Town Center, where we'll continue to monitor how these operations work, and we'll make the correct identification as we have more detail on how the development and the trips related to the Town Center development will impact operations on Wilsonville Road.
Hey, Scott, are you okay with questions as you go, or you want to wait till the end?
That's good.
Okay. Yeah, great. Hey, Scott. Question for you on the trap lane. How much of the traffic that would be on the trap lane is actually expected to turn left, and how much of it would then be having to jostle over into those right two lanes?
Yeah. So just to make sure you understand, this median will come out, so the two lanes on Wilsonville Road will remain, so the through traffic, the intent, Commissioner Heberlein, is that the through traffic will still remain in these two lanes, and only the traffic that wants to turn left onto Park Place and the, only the traffic that wants to turn left onto Park Place will use this trap lane. So if you really think about it, it's really just going to be a long left turn, left turn lane.
Okay.
And we're no longer going to allow the left turns at this intersection.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, I know, I know when they're, uh, at least in, in practice, it seems like when there are trap lanes, there tends to be a lot of, of traffic, of people trying to get through the, the congestion, going into that lane where there's available space and then having them cut back over to the right.
Correct.
To, to get back into where they wanted to go to.
Yeah, and I think the trap lane that you're, you're, you're picturing would be sometimes where you have maybe three through lanes and one of those lanes drops into a left turn lane. In this case, we're just adding it at this location. So it's not like traffic's going to be automatically in that lane, if that makes sense.
And that'll be marked at the beginning of it.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks Scott.
Yep. And there would, there would obviously be some additional guide signage that's going to be needed to make sure we direct drivers to the correct lane.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So this is the new Park Place. This is going to be our new roadway north-south. And so we'll have a new intersection. This will have full movements, but the desire for this to be a multimodal intersection, we're still keeping the intersection relatively small on the, on the minor street approaches. Uh, and then we will have the, the new left turn pocket, um, on both approaches at Park Place. And one of the, the texts that was requested by ODOT at this location is the project should include signal coordination with dump loop sensors unless at the time of construction, a 20-year analysis demonstrates that the sensors and signal coordination in the corridor is not needed, or if an alternative mitigation is identified that has a similar or better, better results. I'll just explain to you what they're asking for there. A dump loop, um, is for circumstances where say that left turn lane begins to start backing up and impacting I-5 and the interchange. A dump loop is just a, an intelligent traffic sensor that identifies when those queues get back to the end and it, it adds additional green time for that eastbound, for this eastbound left turn to serve more vehicles. So it's just a, a smart way of just making sure that we're not creating safety impacts with the addition of the signal. So ODOT's asking this to be considered, or if, if we determine through future traffic analysis that, that we're not having queuing issues, then it's not something that would be required.
Hey Scott, a quick question, uh, are U-turns permitted in this area?
U-turns, uh, I think that would be something that we would have to discuss. We weren't intending to allow U-turns. Uh, U-turn signage could be allowed. It's a five-lane section, so passenger vehicles could do that. Um, but one thing I would, I would discourage from U-turns is they are not pedestrian-friendly, um, in, in some of those challenges. So that's one of the things that we want to make sure from a safety standpoint, that if we do allow U-turns, that we're not impacting pedestrians.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not encouraging that. I was just wondering, you know, with the changes here, so.
Yeah.
I think what you said makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so our, our intent right at this time is not to allow U-turns.
Thanks.
The circulation that, that, uh, that you came up with in Town Center will not require the need for, for U-turns. A lot of times U-turns are popular at signalized intersections when you're trying to allow additional access to driveways, but in this case, Wilsonville Road has pretty good, um, control and I don't really see a big benefit coming out of the U-turns. So this is the existing Wilsonville Rebecca. This is the traffic signal currently provides access to the shopping center. And so our proposal here is to remove the existing traffic signal and replace it with some bicycle and pedestrian flashers. So you can see the, kind of the, the concept here would be to allow the bicycles and pedestrians to still cross and we would have flashing beacons to give them, help give them right of way, um, to cross, but we would only, we wouldn't be allowing through motor vehicle traffic. So motor vehicles at both these locations would be, um, restricted to right-in, right-out movements only. And so the existing left turns or through traffic that's traveling here today would have to go to Town Center Loop East or to the new, new Park Place, um, roadway. Any questions?
Yeah, um, what was the thought behind doing that?
The, the, the main reason for it is the signal spacing. We're adding additional signal. And if we were to keep the signal to, in order to coordinate, uh, the, the signals would be too close. And so we're, we're trying to move, and also, um, from a circulation standpoint, we've got intersections very close at Town Center Loop East, which you can pretty much go through the same shopping center and access Town Center Loop East today. So that, that answers your question. That's the general intent, but we also did not want to imp, impact the pedestrian and bike connectivity and that's why we're, we're still providing, um, the, the beacons. And one of the good things about the flashing beacons is you can still coordinate those with the existing signal system. It's not something that would be random to impact through traffic on Wilsonville Road.
Jerry Greenfield, I predict that that decision's going to be revisited in time.
Um, Commissioners, if I may, this is Miranda Bates-Schell, Planning Director with the City. I would also add that during the Town Center planning process, there was desire for better and safer connectivity north and south of Wilsonville Road. And we heard that this intersection was a priority from the community in terms of providing better multimodal access, um, particularly for bikes and pedestrians to the library and other amenities south of Wilsonville Road, where the intersection at Town Center Loop East, um, doesn't feel as safe for many of the community members. Um, so it, it offers multiple reasons for why, um, there's this shift in how that intersection
And then Town Center Loop East, because we've removed some of the left turn capacity that exists today at Town Center Loop West, um, we are needing eastbound dual left turn lanes. So we would be modifying the existing signal, providing dual left turn lanes, and then that would connect, we have all of the, the planned cycle track along Town Center Loop East in the future, which connects up also to, uh, to the park, um, on the southeast corner. So that is our kind of recommendations for the Wilsonville Road corridor. So we'd be having the, the, the main change is the dual eastbound left turn lanes and the dual northbound receiving lanes.
Scott, is that center median for that dual left turn lane, uh, indicative of the expected length of that second left turn lane, or is that just for notional purposes?
Yeah, that was conceptual.
Okay, just wanted to make, make sure. I, I was going to ask the question about whether or not there's going to be enough capacity to support all the left turns, but if it's notional, I'm good.
Yes. Good question. Um, so I guess before I jump into the cross-sections, was there any other questions about the improvements on Wilsonville Road? Hopefully having the figures made it a little easier than to understand what was, was changing.
Uh, I, I'm uncomfortable with that Rebecca Street, um, resolution, uh, but, uh, I think, I think it will be studied more as the time approaches, as the time comes. If it isn't done in advance and it turns out not to be very workable, then there's an expense of, uh, of redoing that intersection again.
Yep. That's a good point. I, Miranda will probably jump in, but I mean, as, as development occurs in the Town Center, traffic studies will be done and, and we'll be, you know, reevaluating the transportation system based on the, the development that's before us. And so I think this is our best plan at this time, but I, I would agree with you that things will continue to be reevaluated as development occurs.
Right.
And I also would like to add that if we do, uh, have to reconsider that, we need to work with ODOT because right now in current, um, interchange area management plan, uh, there is the recommendation of not add it anymore, uh, traffic signal along the Wilsonville corridor. So that will be something that we will have to work very closely with ODOT and even, um, may seek him for, uh, their approval if that will be the case.
Yeah, I think it's not just the development of, uh, the Town Center, but as, as Frog Pond grows, um, exiting, I mean, driving through that area, we're going to have more traffic through that area. So I guess I'm just, I'm also, I share, um, Commissioner, uh, Greenfield's concerns. Uh, having people stop there when you've got the kind of volume of traffic that we have around the rush hour, I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that also, but again, it will be studied further. And I think we can't underestimate how much more traffic that, um, the Frog Pond development's going to put onto that Wilsonville Road.
Scott, would it be possible to go into a little more detail on that in terms of how, you were talking about how those flashers could synchronize with the rest of the, the traffic systems? And it's not clear to me, and maybe that would help a little. I, I'm, that's the area for me that I'm a little concerned about is, is, you know, we're talking about a, a flashing crosser for a major thoroughfare.
Yes.
You know, the effectiveness of that is, is a little concerning. It's, it's different than the flashers, um, on the east side of Memorial Park on, on, uh, Wilsonville Road where you've got less traffic going through there, but even that one's, can be challenging at busy times.
Yeah, and those, and a lot, and most flashers, um, they're not communicating with other traffic signals, so they're just random, so they're really demand-based. A pedestrian shows up, they hit the push button, they get the flasher. Um, in this case, and I'll, I'll do my best to explain it with this figure here, but you think we, we progress traffic signal based on the, the travel speeds. And so if you're a car going eastbound through these signals, you're going to drive, you're going to get, you should get, as you're the through traffic, you should get a green as you go through the system. And then, you know, when the, the platoons are gone, then we stop traffic on Wilsonville Road and we serve these minor streets. And we're going to have, you know, serve pedestrians and we're going to be serving these side streets. And when this traffic signal, the new traffic signal at Park Place is serving the side street traffic, at that time, we would allow the flasher to turn on. And so we'd, we'd still have pedestrian signals that are telling the traffic when, the pedestrians, when they can cross at this location, but it's not going to be like a full traffic signal. If that makes.
And it's not going to be immediate, so I can't go up to that as a pedestrian, press the button and start walking. I have to wait for the signal to time properly with everything else in the system. Is that right?
Exactly, yep. Unless you're, unless you're lucky and you come up right at the perfect time, it might turn on, but most of the time it's going to be, it could be delayed, um, just like you would at a, at a normal traffic signal.
Okay, that helps, that helps a lot for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that makes. Go ahead, Commissioner Ron.
No, I think that makes me feel a little better about it too. I mean, if it's connected to the other traffic lights, uh, otherwise I, I, yeah, I could just envision not a good system there. So yeah, that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I would only add a couple things just based on some of the concerns that were raised, since it's been a while since this analysis was in front of you. I did want to remind you that the models did incorporate and include Frog Pond growth. Um, so all those households in the system were assumed, um, in terms of the, um, how the traffic model works for this area, for the, the growth horizon for the Town Center Plan. And, um, you know, Rebecca, the, part of the reason for the shift there and not elsewhere is just to remind you that that really connects, um, kind of internally to the Town Center, but doesn't have, um, a connection really out of the Town Center. Um, so there will be a lot of improved internal connectivity when we see the whole system, and I don't know if there's a map in here that shows that whole thing, but really it's Town Center Loop East and then the Main Street connection that is Parkway that then will go Parkway to the north and Town Center Loop West, which connects to that. But Rebecca does not connect to that. So I think it's, in terms of like the, the citywide, more kind of regional traffic flow, that's not existing at Rebecca.
Commissioner Greenfield, uh, are these discussions helpful? They're helpful. I'm still, um, trying to envision getting across there both on foot and also darting across in a car from Town Center on into, uh, into, uh, what's it called, the village. Um, timing just right to catch a light, stopping traffic on both, in both directions, uh, and intersection down. Um, I, I'm having a little hard time. It's possible that it's, it's possible to synchronize those lights so as to make that feasible without having carnage on those crosswalks. Um, but I, it still looks like a danger spot for me. Okay, thank you.
If somebody want to do, do some additional research, I'd like to give, give some exam, real-life examples of where this is occurring and, um, we've, I worked on a project on Broadway Street and for the city of Eugene, right by the University of Oregon, and we have one of these flasher, uh, pedestrian activated flashing beacons that is tied into the existing signal system next to a dorm, crossing, uh, a five-lane section. And it's been operating for probably five to seven years and works very well when college students use it the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
All right. So at, at the last meeting, we went through all of the, the cross-sections and the Town Center Plan, um, had a lot of new cross-sections being proposed that were not in the original trans, city transportation system plan. So we have six new cross-sections, um, that we are, uh, recommending be added to the transportation system plan. And I wasn't planning on going through those since we went those, uh, at our last meeting, but if you have any questions, um, I'd be happy to, to go through those if necessary.
They didn't look like they've changed, correct?
They have not changed at all. As we talked about the schedule, um, we've completed the ODOT coordination, um, and we're, we're here at the planning commission and our next, next staff, uh, our next step would be the city council hearings. And as Coy and Sherrod and Rando, we're, we desire that the planning commission recommends the adoption of TSP, um, to the city council. We'd have to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? Not seeing any. Uh, in order for us to discuss this, does anybody want to, uh, make a motion?
Sure, um, I, I will move to approve Planning Commission Resolution LP 20-0003, as it is written.
Um, excuse me, Commissioner Heberline, before we move forward with the motion, I just would like to, um, have Commissioner Mesba and I confirm that there are no citizens who are on the Zoom call or in the audience who wish to testify before the planning commission on this item.
Yeah, sorry about that. Go ahead. Are there anybody?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let me do this again. I, I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 20-0003.
Um, sorry, Commissioner Heberline, I'm going to interrupt you one more time.
The hearing.
We need to close the public hearing before we make that motion.
Third time's a charm.
I think so.
We're just trying to keep Commissioner Heberline from, uh, making the motion.
I'll let somebody else do it.
I, I close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, Ron, go ahead.
We're good now? Okay. I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 20-0003, as it is written.
I'm tracking it. We have had a motion and a second, uh, and their discussion.
Um, just.
Go ahead.
Sorry, um, you know, you know, looking at the, the way the, the intersections are going to be laid out in, in the future, there is a little bit of concern about, um, what's there today with the Starbucks and the McDonald's and how out of the way people are going to have to go. And I worry that people are going to try to do, um, uh, if that, if that were exactly the, the condition that we're going to see when these road improvements go in, that people might try to do U-turns and some other shenanigans to get there faster. But I keep trying to tell myself that it's unlikely that those exact, um, places of business are going to be in those same configurations by the time this is enacted. Um, is that, is that your understanding? Is that your understanding as well, other Commissioners?
Well, that sort of, yeah, I was kind of thinking the timeframe on this, and I was just thinking about all this and what the impact of this was going to be, and actually when this is going to be phased in. And I'm assuming that some of the, that the phasing will occur more, maybe the urban upgrades to like courtside and before some of the changes on Wilsonville. Is that, is there a timeline of any type in place now or being considered?
Hi, this is Kim Ripoll, Senior Planner--
In order of moving--
Can you hear me? Okay, great. So this is, this series of improvements along Wilsonville Road, these are some of the more critical infrastructure, transportation infrastructure projects. That being said, I think as you can see from the intricacies of things like the turn lanes and the signals, that they really do all work together to, so they would be implemented in a similar timeframe. So that being said, we don't have a specific, specific number of years by which we would expect that, but you know, one thing that we have to keep in mind is that the really key pivotal piece of that is the Main Street, the Park Place extension, and that is a project that is currently on private property, and so there is going to be some coordination that would be needed to even get that project to happen. None of these other improvements along Wilsonville Road are going to really come to be until we have that connection in place. And so, you know, it's hard to say specifically how many years down the road that will be, but the very nature of that intersection, or that extension of that road, is going to be somewhat dependent upon that property owner, which that's pretty much the entire shopping center, either giving us right-of-way to make that improvement or doing that improvement in concert with some, some piece of redevelopment along there. So, you know, that being said, I don't know that it's a short term, you know, certainly it is one of the more important projects, and so, you know, maybe more of a midterm, mid-range implementation measure, but you know, we do still have a lot of pieces in place that we have to get, like our funding, infrastructure funding plans, and really have a better understanding of how these improvements are being paid for before they're actually going to get built, if that helps clarify.
Yeah, thank you. That does.
Commissioner Greenfield, you started saying something.
I bet you guys were going to make the same point, that these obviously are going to have to be done, at least in some limited sequence, and some of them can't be done before others are done. So I'm thinking that most, that the, certainly the ones that are related to the new, the extension can't be done early, and I'm wondering whether the Town Center West intersection might be altered in, toward this plan without having that Rebecca Street intersection actually done, in order to route more of the traffic to Town Center Loop East more immediately, since that seems to be a critical problem for us.
So I would say--
The problem for us, even quite apart from the Town Center redevelopment itself, it's already a problem.
So I would say the Town Center Loop West intersection, obviously, that the biggest change that you would see with that improvement is going to be removing those two turn lanes, well, they have to go somewhere. And so I think what you're going to see, at the very least, the Park Place improvements, as well as, you know, the Town Center Loop East improvements, to be able to accept that left-turn capacity that would otherwise be going up Town Center Loop West. So we would have to sequence those in a manner such that you're not overburdening Wilsonville Road by removing the capacity that would be turning from, you know, the eastbound traffic going north on Loop West. The other capacity improvements would have to happen first.
We seem to be worrying about the implementation of the plan. I'm not sure that that is what we are considering tonight.
Good point.
Yeah, good reminder.
Yeah. But if you think this is so complex that it's never going to be possible to implement it, then perhaps that's the question we should be asking regardless of timeline of our technical staff. You know, Scott maybe has some information, I mean, he was talking about having done some of these things in Eugene. Are there similar redesigns that are working well in other areas? Is this unduly complicated to pull off, or what is, can you shed some light on that?
Yeah, I apologize, it sounds like maybe there was some vibrations going on, and I tried to put on my headset, hopefully you hear me better. The, I've been involved in a lot of projects like this, and I'd say implementation is, I know we can, we can get it done, but there's so many unknowns, because a lot of it has to do with how the property redevelops, and as redevelopment occurs, and what comes first, and there's so many combinations that we could, we could, you know, talk about that would just be a waste of time, because you never know what's going to happen first, and if, if the large development next to Rebecca is the first one, and they, they may even want to close that driveway because it's in the way of a building, you just, you never know what's going to happen. And I'm confident from working on many, many similar projects that we're going to make it happen, but can we figure it all out right now? I think that would be near impossible, if that makes sense.
It does, and I wasn't, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot to tell us that this is under control, I just wanted to make sure, or get some confirmation that this is not going to be crazy.
No. Yeah, I'm confident we can do it, and it's just going to be, we'll have the process, the development process to figure that out.
And that it's going to be implemented according to the conditions on the ground at the time.
Correct.
And Scott, can you confirm the existing level of services at this intersection? I believe at the Town Center Loop West intersection is currently is still operate within the level of acceptance.
Correct.
Am I correct?
That is correct. It operates at Level Service D today, which is the city standard.
Thank you.
And if I remember correctly, the forecast of traffic with the redesign was actually being the conditions compared to no redesign. Am I remembering that correctly?
That's correct.
Back to our, our conversation about the motion.
Well, I wanted to make a point that the report does a very fine job, seems to me, of incorporating our input, so there really are no surprises. There are some surviving concerns, but they're ones that seem to be intractable, or immediate solution at least. So I'm, I'm quite in favor of the report.
Does that mean you're in favor of the resolution?
That's right.
Okay. Commissioner Willard?
I'm satisfied. I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Mellon?
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Commissioner Heberlein?
Good.
You're good, too. Commissioner Woods?
I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Juzinski?
I'm good with it.
So we seem to have some concerns with the assurances on implementation given to us by Scott, and are we ready to take a vote on this?
Yes.
Can we have a roll call, please?
I couldn't hear who that was. Was that--
I couldn't either.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Willard?
Erin, I think that's you.
Yeah, I think--
Sorry, it's Commissioner Willard. Are you wanting a roll call vote, Chair Mesba?
Yes.
Okay. So let's start fresh. Can you hear me?
Better now. Is that as muck--
Let me move, just a second.
Can you hear me at this point? Here. They had those before.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. All right. We're going to do a roll call vote, I'll take it from the top again. So we started with Commissioner Willard?
Yes.
Brianna Tosinski?
Yes.
Erin Woods, excuse me, Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Heberlein?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mesba?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
I am trying to find my agenda. So that is the end of our public hearing and decision on the resolution. The other items of the agenda are the City Council Action Minutes that was included in the packet. Are there any questions on that for staff? Commissioner Mellon?
Yes. I see that the City Council in September approved awarding Angelo Planning a middle housing, and then I see that we have a presentation in November, and I was just, are they, is that group going to be sharing with us what, what they're going to be working on? I was just curious, what was the context of that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Melon. This is Miranda Bates, all Planning Director with the City. So as, oh gosh, I'm trying to remember what month it was, but I believe it was over the summer, Dan Polly, Planning Manager with the City, brought to you an outline of upcoming housing plan work. It was in advance or around the time that we were applying for funding from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to do that work. As you'll recall, the scope of that is to come into compliance with House Bill 2001 and the rules that are being put into place for that legislation. It's also to go a bit more than just standard compliance, but to do it in a way that fits Wilsonville, and that also integrates strategies that were identified in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan about how to utilize the integration of middle housing to really be more inclusive and equitable. So that work is the work that's associated with that scope of work. We did a competitive proposal process, and Angelo Planning Group was selected for that. I know they have begun doing essentially the code audit with staff, so a couple staff members have been reviewing the code and doing that alongside the consultant team. So I believe that the November item, and I let Dan Polly go earlier this evening since he was not on the agenda, so he may actually have a more comprehensive answer for you, which I would be happy to get for you and send out to the Commission an email. But my understanding is that that November meeting really would be the first findings of the code audit, and the comparison of that against where we are in terms of rulemaking and the areas of the code that the City will be pursuing work on.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's helpful. So we'll be kind of starting with the code and moving through the whole process then to come into compliance.
Yeah, so we need to first figure out the key areas where we need to do the majority of our work, and that's both with the code as well as some of our master plans. We do imagine we will need to update the master plan, or, we're not sure, but we think we may need to update the master plan for Frog Pond West, but we may also be able to just do it through code work. So that's one of the other things we have to review. So we'll have a better sense of what that kind of work program will look like from the aspect of the changes that need to occur, and then the real outreach around, with the community, and to talk to the community about their preferences around middle housing. All of that work will happen next year, once we're on the other side of the holidays.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? The work program for the rest of the year for us was also included in the packet. You may have noticed that the next meeting is rescheduled for November 12th instead of the 11th. I don't recall now why we needed to move it, but we did.
The reason that is moved is that Wednesday is Veterans Day, federal holiday, the offices will be closed, so we will not be having the meeting that day, we'll be having it the next day. So it's a Thursday, so I know that'll shake things up, so make sure you mark your calendars now.
Thank you for that reminder of why we did that, and it's the same time, but the day, a day later. And December 9th, we don't have anything to do.
Well, my staff are very busy, and things are constantly changing, as you'll see, as you've noticed throughout the year, this is a common occurrence for us. But my hope is, is that that may continue to stay free, and that I may be able to send you off with a holiday gift of time come December. But we'll see how work programs progress over the next few weeks and see if that remains a possibility.
A holiday gift of time. How poetic. That's the end of what I have on my list. If there isn't anything else, we are ready for adjournment.
I'm that we adjourn.
Great. Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Seconded. And we are adjourned at 7:09, four minutes later than we were scheduled on our agenda. We are, we are doing very well. Thank you.
Very well. The gift of time.
Thank you, Commissioners.